Okay, I'm gonna call the order, the November 3rd, 2025, regular meeting with the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our pledge. I don't see the sheriff here this morning, so we'll have a moment of silence after that. Okay, so this morning, we have probably a pretty short agenda. We do not have a public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment, correct? Okay, make sure of that. Okay, does anyone have any constituent concerns we need to talk about? Anything? All right, I appreciate everyone's, the staff taking care of most of those anyway. Then next will be administrative agency reports and presentations. We do not have anything there. I do not have a discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone has any questions about? There are 11 items on the consent agenda. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those favorites say aye? Aye? Okay, that's unanimous. The next item will be a re- the only item we have is on the regular agenda, and it's the request approval of a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025. We have a veterans officer, Stephen, I'll read this one. So Stephen, it says CPT, what does that mean?
Captain.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, retired as a captain in 2017.
Okay, great.
So since then, I've been off the hook as far as the government's concerned, and some point I'll get to draw retirement from it, but until then, I got some VA disability coming in and things like that. I had service in Iraq and back in the 90s, I was in Bosnia, so just fun stuff in the cavalry. We got tanks and Bradleys and whatnot instead of horses.
Okay.
Same unit, so as you can see on my hat, I got a two up there, that's the second cav from my active duty unit, but.
Oh, and my grandfather was in the real cavalry in 1929, yeah.
You told me that, you told me that, and if you ever have any of his, his, I guess, stuff that you want to display, let us know.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
We have kind of a, a bit of a museum there in our office that we're putting together from donations from our veterans here in Haywood County that were able to display in that office, so.
Okay, so if anyone has anything like that, they can bring it by, and of course, we'll take care of that forever because
Yes.
we're gonna have that veterans office forever.
Exactly.
As far as I'm concerned.
Definitely something we enjoy doing now that we have the space we didn't have here, so.
That's very good.
So.
And I just want on a personal note, I appreciate all you did for my dad. He was a veteran and y'all really took, the veterans office really took good care of him, and I really appreciate everything you did too, Stephen. You really helped out many times, so thank you for that.
Thank you. So I'll read this resolution, and then I was able to update our info, and that's what you have there in front of you, and I'll, and I'll share some of that with you afterwards as far as what we got going on and what we've done over the last year. So without further ado, resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025. Didn't need my glasses last time I did this. Whereas the residents of Haywood County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our county and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contribution and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Haywood County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition to, from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas Haywood County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as Operation Green Light for Veterans County. Haywood County hereby declares November 4th through 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the services and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service, and be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Haywood County encourages citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window or their place of business or residence from October 4th to 11th, 2025, adopted this third day of November, 2025.
It's November 4th, I think you said October, I believe, so.
I'm saying. Sorry, November.
November, yeah, okay. So if a citizen wants to put green light in their windows, they can do that?
Yes.
Citizen can, okay.
Absolutely.
All righty, great. All right.
And I've got the data here to share with you that we were able to update, so if you refer to your packets that I brought.
I noticed you giving that to us, and it has really great information about veterans in our county. So you've got over 5,000 veterans in our county per the 23 count, 2023, and then that's 8.1% of our population is
Yes.
are veterans.
Exactly.
And I also noticed that there was, when, when, when a veteran has disability, I know you have completed some disability and pension claims for compensation. If they do have a disability they believe, what do they do to? Do they just go to the VA and get that approved?
So after we file the claim for them, the VA regional office pays for an exam. It could be a contracted one. Most of the time, it is a contracted doctor to do the exam, and that is basically, that doctor is gonna say their final determination is gonna be hopefully more likely than not that that condition's related to service. If they say less likely than not, that's a torpedo that sinks the claim, and that's where we have to, they come back to us with that denial letter, and we have to fight it from there. We have to find some other doctor, and we have to help however we can assemble evidence that that veteran can take to another doctor to help refute that denial, and that's some of our ongoing, hundreds and hundreds of claims we have ongoing every year that.
You're able to help with.
Yeah, we work on continuously, pretty much, so. One thing about that GDX report, the geographic distribution of the expenditures, that's, which is where we get our data. You can Google that, and you'll go to the page, and you can see, you can open all of the reports for all of the FYs back through history there, and one thing odd about this year is that they didn't include the veteran population data on the FY24. So that's why I'm still using that 2023 number there, 5,039, that you mentioned, so. They do, however, have on the FY24 report that year's number, and they, they have it a little differently. They put total direct expenditures, and it's listed where you can clearly see 44,907,000. That right there is what we help to bring into this county through our efforts with these disability claims. This is money that's tax-free. None of it is stripped away to go back to the government. It's all directly spent here in the area. Veterans pay bills, buy gas, whatever they need to, so we do all we can to, to help get that for the veterans here.
Okay, great.
And as far as what we do, if, this page here is the numbers of claims that we did over the last 12 months. And as you can see, that's an average of 85 claims a month, and that includes appeals and, and things like that. Anytime a claim is denied and we start it again, you know, sometimes that's a supplemental claim, sometimes that's a higher level review, sometimes that's an appeal. We've counted all those as, as claims in that number there, and that's where we land. Some, some months are heavier than others, but.
Okay.
And.
It's like y'all were busy. You were busy last month, too, so had over 100.
Yes, October and.
September, yeah.
I got that number, yeah, that was Thursday, so I'm not sure Debbie may have added to that while I was out Friday, so. And the next page, you can see what the disability rate pay chart is. And so when someone is given a disability, 10% or 20, on up to 100, you can see the pay chart there for each individual disability, and the VA has a way of combining. If someone has multiple disabilities, they have this crazy scheme, they, they don't add them together, they combine them and pay them like an overall percentage, like 40% or whatever, and each level of disability has its own set of things it unlocks for, for that veteran. So just a 10% disability unlocks free healthcare at the VA hospital. So a lot of times, that's the most important, most needed thing we can get for a veteran, and that free healthcare includes free hearing aids for veterans that have, most veterans have tinnitus ringing in your ears and hearing loss at the very least. So I usually start there and go from that point, and then after that claim, I get access, as part of the claims process, that I get access to their service treatment records, which are often handwritten from 50 years ago, and I go through every line of that looking for other things I can work on to file claims, things that the veteran may even have forgot about. Twisted ankles, whatever I can find in there. File claims for that, too, on the next round for that veteran. Trying to increase them as high as I can, up towards that 100% mark. At the 100%, actually, that's back down to 50, 50, if you're a retiree, at that 50% mark, you get both your full military retirement and your full VA check, so that's a huge win for them. 70% is nice. If the veteran ever decides to go in a nursing home, the VA will pay for that, and as everyone knows, that's tremendously expensive to your estate.
Yep.
100% is, is cool because your dependents get free healthcare at 100% rate. That's called Champ VA, and it's like Tricare. If you've ever heard of Tricare, it is, it's excellent healthcare that's honored just about anywhere. So that's, that's what we try to get, you know, as high as we can. Keep filing claims. They keep coming back. We, we file claims, and a lot of times, the claims are denied. We don't take no for an answer. We, you know, if it's legit, you know, if it's not a frivolous claim, we keep fighting it for them and help guide them, steer them, you know, collecting evidence and resubmitting, and that's what we do every day, and I can't keep this stuff straightened in my head, so I have a vast Excel spreadsheet where I keep all this data and notes on everyone, and hundreds of times, I've talked to each person, and phone calls, and emails, and personal visits, and, and we do our best kind of trying to keep track of it. And somebody pops in I haven't seen for a year and a half, I look at my notes, and ah, that's where we left off. So.
Very good.
When a veteran passes away, the widow could get the dependency and indemnity compensation. As you see there, it pays out at $1,653 a month. That's if the veteran was 100% or if one of those service-connected things finds its way onto the death certificate. So when a veteran has something like ischemic heart disease or PTSD, PTSD, that's enough if it's on the death certificate as a contributing factor to the death. You know, the death could be struck by lightning, but if PTSD is a contributing factor on the death certificate, that's enough for that widow. The VA will award $1,653 a month, tax-free, to that widow. And which is nice, because a lot of times, that income that the veteran was bringing in is turned off upon that veteran's death. So we do help a lot of widows try to maintain some of that VA income that way, so. Other than that, like I said before, the, the healthcare it unlocks is tremendously valuable, so. That's all I can think to share. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to try and answer, so.
Are you having questions at all?
Stephen, not a, really a question. Well, I do, I think I'll have a follow-up, but thank you first of all for your service.
Sure.
Very much appreciated. To our country, first of all, and then to have this office. I know I've referred to a lot of our constituents that's come to me about questions to you guys, and you always follow through and help them, and I think a lot of our folks forget that that's a huge benefit to have your office here in the county, so. I'm like the chairman, I always support your office and having it here for sure, but I guess the question I do have, the veteran population that you've got on here, have you seen that over the years growing? Maybe more of the percentage. Is that percentage getting higher? Or is it kind of stable? What would you say of that?
I would say since I've been here, it's kind of dropped slightly, just, just by a handful, and kind of, I don't know, it's not been significant enough to, to say either way. It's, you know, downtrends usually have an upward trend after that, so. You know, if you look at it more than what I've seen, it may be level, but it's stayed about 5,000. You know, it's never, I've never seen it below that. So hopefully, the VA will come back and give us some data, personnel data, population, I mean, as, as far as where they are this year.
Yes, a follow-up to that, compared to that percentage and that number, have you seen the dollar amount from a financial standpoint go up or down?
That's.
I think we were 44 for the county, is that right?
Yes, if you look back at that first page where there's a FY23, you can see it's laid out differently right there, but you see where it says compensation and pension, it says 43, so gone up a little bit right there.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do and the service you provide for our veterans here. Veterans have a soft place, you know, in my heart, and always appreciate what their sacrifice was, and we appreciate you.
You're welcome, and I just remembered, we have the grants that we're, got approved for that first one, the $18,289, and we spent that down to like $15, and just on things for the veterans here, you know, better furniture for our office, more comfortable things for them to use, a lot of outreach, things that we can give to veterans with our brand on it, is what we're, we're doing with that. And we just applied for the next round of that. It's a full $20,000, and hopefully, we get that, and if we do, we'll be able to share our message and, and name brand, you know, out there permanently in, in ways, whatever I can think of. I'm always up for suggestions, too, of ways to do that, and looking for just good ways to, to spend that money that's a permanent investment rather than an advertisement in a newspaper, or I've tried billboards before and limited success on that. I want ways to, to do it where it's, it's gonna be there a while, so. If there's any questions about the grant, let me know. Otherwise, that's all I have.
So how do you reach out to, how are veterans aware of the services that you provide through our county office?
I'd say most of the time, it's, it's word of mouth. We do have, of course, the website and stuff, advertisers. All they have to do is Google, and we show up right where our office is, so it's.
I just wonder if sometimes, you know, veterans that have maybe spent, maybe a short time in the military, or, you know, have come out and done other things, if they're aware of the benefits that are available to them through your office, and I know I've seen the spreadsheets I met with you several years ago and, and saw the work that you do, and it's, I, I just want to make sure that if we can get, if we can help with the messaging, it's very important to connect those folks with you.
That's the difficult part, because these veterans come from all over the world, literally back home, or maybe they're settling down here if they're a retiree. They're coming from literally everywhere, and it's, all we rely on is, is did their exit process of the military inform them of the concept of a county veteran service officer, and to seek that person out in whatever county they happen to wind up in, be it back home, or hey, I just like Haywood County, I visited there one time, and I want to settle down there. Okay, now that you're here, come see me.
I'm sure we have, because we have a lot of retirees that live here, and I'm sure that there are the numbers in the, I'm sure the numbers of veterans in those folks that have relocated here is greater than we maybe even know.
Yes, there's tons of people here that come out of the woodwork to, that we're glad to help. The VA hospital sends a lot here.
Oh, that's good.
They're like, hey, you need to go see Stephen, and it's, you know, file some claims for that.
Yeah.
So we're always glad that the VA is, the, and it's the, the doctors, the, the staff, whoever's interacting with a veteran, they're like, hey, go see them. Go see your service officer, so get a lot from them.
Good to know.
As far as getting, what you're told when you leave service is, is a mixed bag of either nothing or too much. Like when I left active duty after Iraq, it was like drinking from a fire hose of information, and we were just bombarded with everything we could possibly need, and at that point, you just kind of whitewash and, and don't see anything, so hopefully people will pick out of there what they need, so they're told. It's like, okay, did you, did you comprehend and the idea of a veteran service officer, and to go and seek one out when you get home, so hopefully, and one of my, one of my favorite things is catching a new, you know, recently separated service member and helping them out and guiding them, and, and, you know, doing for them what I didn't get, you know, as far as guidance and counseling, and, and, you know, put my arm around their shoulder, and like, hey, let's think about some college.
Well, hopefully, in our massive viewership, we'll have some people that will, we joke about that amongst ourselves, but hopefully we can help to pass the word about the things that you do and connect some new folks with you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and appreciate this opportunity, so.
I, I want to thank you, too, for your service and for what you do. The VA really done a lot for my dad in his later years, well, even earlier years, you know, when he was, got hurt pretty bad, and they, they took real good care of him for years. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, and, and that just brings to my mind something that, that often breaks my heart is when a veteran in their 90s, they're in the nursing home, or they're wherever they're at, in their later years, and they've been so hard and so strong and didn't want to come to us, didn't want to ask for anything from the VA, until they're in their 90s, and I call it the 11th hour of their life, and what can the VA do, what can we do at that point is very limited. I do take the same effort. I file those claims, but are they gonna come to fruition and benefit that veteran? That's, that's hard to say. It depends on how long they live. In that, I call them to myself deathbed claims, which are very difficult, so. That being said, if you know older veterans, please talk to them, encourage them, drag them physically to us. I'll tie them down to the chair long enough to file a claim. If they don't want to leave the house, let me know. I'll get my claim to them for a signature, so. We'll, we'll do whatever we can to, to get them some help whether they want it or not.
I may say something. I know Tim's done a great job lighting up our courthouse with the green floodlights. Are we planning on doing that as well during this Operation Green Light? So that's great. I serve on the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and, and one of our county commissioners in North Carolina came up with this Operation Green Light idea, and in your proclamation, you read that the National Association of County Commissioners are encouraging counties all across the United States to recognize our veterans in this fashion, so if you come by the courthouse, it's breathtaking. We have a beautiful courthouse here, the historic courthouse, and when it's lit up green in honor of our veterans, it'll, it'll make you stop out here and, and take a, take a, take a little closer look, so. Look forward to seeing that, and out of respect for our veterans, if you come by my house in Bethel, I've lit my house up taking the cue from Tim Sisk, what he does to our courthouse, I, I do my house that way, and I've done that for the last few years since we started this project, and our veterans are the backbone of our country.
Thank you. Appreciate that, that's.
We appreciate, we appreciate your service. Went to church yesterday in over in Bethel on 276. I don't know sheer folks or VFW or somebody that put these, the crosses up and the, and the American flags for servicemen and in, in memory of them, and in memory of Veterans Day. They do it on Memorial Day as well, and it's, it's, it's a time to stop and reflect. You see the names of family members, community members, loved ones, you know, it takes, it takes your breath, and I really appreciate your service. Really appreciate our veterans, and I want to read, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I want to read what President Dwight D. Eisenhower said in 1954. He said Veterans Day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the sea. valiantly on the sea, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us reconsecrate ourselves to the task of promoting an enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain." President Dwight D. Eisenhower. That was his Veterans Day proclamation in 1954, and I think it's worthy of a look back to this morning, so
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the resolution that Stephen just read? Okay, for a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Stephen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have on my agenda. Does anybody have anything else further?
Might ask our
I'm sure you do, Tommy.
County attorney and
No, that's okay.
I'll make a motion, may adjourn.
That's two meetings in a row, Frank, they've shut us out.
Is there a second?
Second.
Because Brian can't do it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourned. Y'all be safe out there.